Bringing the Dunbar and select board meeting to order on May fifteenth at seven oh seven. We have a full board present, town administrator. Leo Martell will be recording for the benefit of public. And that will be uploaded to the town website. I'd like to make sure Jennifer makes a correction on the minutes, not say you two will do the town website if we could. I'm sure just something that she was used to because we always said both. And we have Don Larson here from the general public tonight. Okay, gentlemen, I have some meeting minutes from the previous meetings that under old business.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of May first, twenty twenty five as amended.
Second.
Motion made and discussion? Are being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, which meeting minutes were they, the regular meeting minutes? Okay, another non-public.
You can time Dave, eight oh one, eight fifty-two, or nine oh six?
Yep. I'll follow up with a second motion then if you want, gentlemen, ready? I'll make a motion to approve the eight oh one P M. non-public minutes of May first as amended.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion?
No, no, no ceiling on these minutes at all?
No. Thanks for updating the amendments on it, Liam. Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the eight fifty-two non-public minutes of May first, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, any discussion?
None.
Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Dana, you're on the next one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the nine oh six P M. non-public minutes of May first, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those are out of the way.
Let's have the meeting right there.
Yeah.
Start Liam's pile over there if you would for us, Dana.
I will.
Okay. Open it up for public comment?
Ah. I'm here on behalf of the flags around Dunbar. And as many of you know that we're gonna have a flag retirement ceremony on the fourteenth of June. Fred Mullins recommended that I get your permission to have the fire pit on the commons to burn the flags. And what we'll do is we'll get the two-foot cement tiles and that put on on the ground and then put the fire pit on top of that so that we don't damage the grass or anything like that.
Great idea.
I put together, this is just a mock-up. This is a work in progress, I mean, literally. That's just the rough of the program that we're gonna have. And it's already gaining more traction.
I believe I'm gonna be here. Oh, yeah.
We've got a lot of people that are committed to be part of it. My ability to organize like I used to is kind of slipping by the wayside. But I wanted to have also with this as a townwide picnic, you know, in the afternoon. I've got the Hoppington Band that'll be here and they'll play a concert after the event. And that's being paid for by Capital Well. He's taking care of that. And the Sons of American Revolution, what they want to do also that's not on the program is to put a wreath on Caleb Stark's tombstone. And that because he was in the Battle of Bunker Hill, and this is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of that battle. So they want to honor him. And he's on our town seal going to Bunker Hill. That's who that is, so.
And I should say much to the displeasure of his parents.
Yeah, well, and the other thing is, is that, and I put this out to Curtis, who's the president of the New Hampshire Society, that, you know, if we, we can do the cemetery in that which would involve some transportation, or we can do it at the statue of Caleb Stark, you know. So I haven't heard back from him yet on that. But, like I say, we've got several things planned. The one thing that also is your permission to use the town tent, probably the thirty by thirty, just in case there's some inclement weather. And if we do the, if somebody wants to take the bull by the horns and do the townwide picnic also, I then probably the twenty by forty tent also. But they hop into band, it's not gonna be the full band, it'll be, so they'll be in the bandstand and they'll set up. But that's the work in progress and.
Well, it's good.
All I need is your permission to do the fire pit and everything on commons.
I don't have any problem with that, anybody else from the board have an issue?
Just for my information, where is this fire pit? Where is the fire pit?
It'll be in front of the bandstand, that's where we're gonna set up.
Okay.
That'd be far enough away.
It's a temporary one.
It'll be isolated, and then individual groups that are participating will do a ceremonial burning of a flag and pick them up and put them in the fire. Yeah, so.
How you start the fire? How are you gonna stop the fire? How are you gonna start the fire, ignite the fire?
Oh, I'm gonna dump all kinds of gasoline on it.
Put a tire in there?
I got Boy Scouts coming, come on.
Well, the thing is.
We got kindling and everything else.
I've seen people use gasoline, like my neighbor who we think were educated people, but the thing is, and then they light it with a match thinking it's gonna be safe. Exactly. So I think it's a, I don't want to be accidents out there, that's.
No, no, I got plenty of kindling and stuff like that, and we got pine, so it's gonna burn real good.
I said it tongue-in-cheek, but there's a little bit of seriousness there to it.
No, 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 I, no, we plan to do it the old-fashioned way.
That's on the fire department too, so.
We got two sticks together, and we've been watching Survivor.
Okay. I don't have any issue, I don't think you're slipping too much, Don, it's quite a bit of activity for flag burning.
Yeah.
That's the way that's due from the town people, I think.
Yeah, I have no issue.
Does it, what is it, barbecue for the chicken?
Chicken barbecue is end of June?
End of June.
Yeah. They've got a band route front here.
I have no issue, so you've got the board consensus to go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you. The flags will go up next week.
Yeah.
A couple of them will be putting them up. So we'll have those up, so everything will, you know, look very nice and patriotic.
The Boy Scouts doing the neighborhood flags of the.
They're doing the neighborhood, you know, they're, I guess you call it an event flag, so Memorial Day, our event is on Flag Day. And that, Fourth of July, you know, there's like five or six deals, I think it's like forty-seven dollars or something like that here, and that, so.
You're not slipping too much, you came in for permission to advance this thing.
That means he is slipping.
You're all welcome to come and enjoy yourself and.
All right, sounds good.
Take part in the pageantry, they've got quite a, quite a program, you know, because I'm working with the Sons of American Revolution and they're, you know, this isn't their first rodeo, so they're well organized and it'll be good, and we've got some good audio, we'll have, like I say, the band will be there.
I think would be great, I love the fact this town has a good connection to Caleb, and Caleb represents our legacy. What I'd like to do, the thing is you get news media hooked in maybe? News media hooked in?
Oh, yeah. I'll send out a bulletin and I missed the June issue of the Bulletin, they've got weird deadlines and everything, but it'll be in the Concord Monitor and then I'll get WMUR, and that, I've got a, I've got a connection there.
I keep seeing this person I know on WMUR all the time.
Boy, when I get their email, I don't let it go.
Thank you, Don.
But that's, that's what's cooking there, so, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Don, have a good one, be safe.
Peter, you have a great evening.
Okay. So, the first thing on the agenda is discuss the purchase of the green property, as well as meeting with the lands to go over the.
Final sale.
The final sale, there was a package on the desk here, here it is. So. Just so you guys are on the same page here is the, here's a map of the land property with the street address. Of the sixteen acres.
Did we get a nine-one-one address from DOT yet?
We have not, but I did, I did, Peter Weeks asked me to go down and put a, I put a cone up, an orange cone, where the driveway entrance would be. And if you guys look at the southern section on thirteen, there's a break in the wall there.
Yes.
If you went to the left of that, the bank is up six or eight feet high all the way to the other entrance pretty much. And if you go south of that, the bank is up fairly high. But at that entrance, you can walk regular level from the street, so I asked them to put that as our curb cut from DOT because they have to apply for one. So that will be the curb cut into the piece of property.
Can you point that out?
So, looking at thirteen. Here's the front of the property, see the curb cut?
That one right there, a little right there?
Yeah, the land is all humped up here and all humped up here.
Okay.
Walking nice and long.
It's a little one in the middle.
You got it.
That one there?
Yeah. I wasn't given those to you guys to keep.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
I'll print some more, I guess.
I just wrote it.
I saw that, both of you did. So what, so much for my package.
I'll make you some copies for you.
So anyways, I have the subdivision application that Jacques filled out, that I have to have Mrs. Lane sign, and also permission to let Jacques Blanger represent her at the meeting. So I'm meeting her at nine tomorrow morning.
So she's the, okay.
So she's the landlord and I ordered for Jacques to come to their meeting. I know because I was on the board for a long time that it was done. I also have.
Are you gonna be attending the meeting?
I probably will go.
I think she knows that, Lane.
So.
Because Dana will be here also.
Can I bring up a point, even though it's a land property and we're buying land from her, we have that area in the application for a subdivision, there's waivers, you can ask for waivers.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't hurt for the town to say, we're the interested party, and we have a purchase and sale, and we'd like to waive all but necessary fees to the town. So that way, I understand what you're saying, she's the owner, but she's not, she wouldn't be before the planning board for a two-lot subdivision. We're forcing the, the reason.
With the driving factor, right?
So it would not hurt to ask for waivers?
Yeah, I don't think, we'll have Dana bring it up as a member, maybe.
Right here.
I'm gonna let Jacques represent her, unless something comes out of where like the price is wrong or something, that I'm gonna try not to speak because I'll be the selectman's rep signing our, our end result. So I'll try and let Dana speak and Jacques speak to it, and I'll probably attend just to see if there's anything that comes out.
During the process, waivers are like unique things that you can bring up to the property, to the transaction, and waiving the fees is would be one thing.
Yeah.
But some waivers are specific, like an off-site driveway to a lot where you're not using the frontage for a driveway, that's a waiver that's part of the planning.
Monuments on the wire?
Yeah.
Things like that.
Now, it can be, a waiver can be for anything, but in this particular case, we're gonna ask for a waiver of fees, which is kind of.
And who, who generally is asking for waivers?
The applicant.
The applicant of, for the, to the planning board?
Yeah. Like, to give you an example, we don't do this much anymore. Let's say you have a three-hundred-acre parcel and kind of five-acre lot, you give them a waiver not to monument the whole three-hundred acres and just monument, monument the new five-acre lot with.
Oh, with cornerstones, okay.
So just something like, so typically it's coming from the applicant or the surveyor for the applicant.
Okay.
And just, I only bring that up is because when an applicant applies to the planning board, they're creating and incurring work for the town and costs associated with the administrative level of it. So we have a fee chart that he has, you know, fifty dollars per lot and, you know, newspaper notices and all these things, where we would be paying for it ultimately.
We're gonna pay regardless, yeah.
Right.
The checklist showed five hundred and ten dollars were the nominal fees with the abutters listed they provided as part of the application. It's, it's more or less a lot line subdivision, even though, you know, there's two lots, so there's two lots of record, so. Administration fee for the application is fifty, the base fee is one fifty, and then fifty dollars times two lots, a hundred for the number of lots, because you have the existing plus the new one. Ten dollars per abutter, they're eighteen, so that's a hundred and eighty. Recording fees are thirty. Total due payment to town of Dunbar is five hundred and ten, so.
But my point is, you're, I mean, you could take it out of the warrant because it's a fee incurred in the warrant.
But we're kinda taking it from ourselves and giving it back to ourselves.
Right.
So I would. If that's cleaner and easier, then we'll just do that too, it doesn't bother.
Well, the thing is, the motion would be, I'd like to make a motion, we waive all fees less the abutter notifications. Those we have to go through regardless, those other fees are administrative fees which we're gonna absorb anyways. It's a cer, it's a circular file, in other words, either we pay us now or we take it back later, it's all, it's all.
Why not do the abutter fees?
Yeah, if we pay the abutter fees, we're just giving it back to ourselves.
No, because those actually cost.
No, I know, yeah, I know that.
But we're just giving it back to ourselves.
Yeah.
We're paying it for ourselves and giving it back to ourselves.
I mean, you got the cost.
Yes, you're, you're point taken, point taken, so again, just waive all fees, be done with it.
Yeah, yeah. Less confusion, yeah.
Yeah, less confusion.
So.
So they don't take any answer, but we'll waive them.
When I sign from her tomorrow, I'm not gonna take any money from her, I'm gonna just have the paperwork signed by her.
Because the planning board can disagree with that waiver, they can say, no, we don't agree with that, but ultimately, we're paying for it.
Or the selectman, we could also vote to pay the fees, pay them to the town because we have the money in our.
Well, it's not a matter of money, it's just a matter of, how do we make it simpler on the people doing the work?
Right.
By waiving all.
And also just optically, rather than putting, paying money that we're ultimately just paying ourselves, then why not make the transaction closing cost look less anyway?
Yeah.
Right, why not make it look like we minimize the closing costs?
Yeah, because it is all town expenses and we're, it's part of the town business.
And Lane did say that when she looks up the transactions, anything the town has done, those transfer tax and stamp tax and all that stuff is not charged to the town.
Has been, has been zero.
So, we'll see how it plays out and.
I'll confirm it again tomorrow morning first thing.
Yeah, are there any, are there any fees paid to the state that we get a waiver from other than the, the transfer tax?
There are no other fees that I know of.
Just transfer.
Oh, what was the last one that you had said in that list, I thought that sounded like one that had to go out to somebody.
Is that a driveway permit from DOT?
Nope, that one doesn't have any fees yet. The last one was thirty dollars recorded fee, that one will have to be paid.
Yeah, so that's to the county, right?
You're saying no?
No, that's the registry of deeds and.
The milark doesn't either.
We don't need to pay for.
Oh, well.
Oh, we don't?
I'm almost a hundred percent sure, doing it a long time, but those are the things I would be checking. Transfers tax and the recording of the plan, but.
All right.
So I'll plan on not getting any money from her, we'll just let Lane get to the water.
Absolutely.
If we need to space, pay some no-rolls, we will, because that was part of the agreement, that we keep them closing costs to a minimum.
When's the last time the town bought property?
We don't.
We've been donating property.
We, and I will say through conservation, we have.
Yeah.
And also through town forests, we have.
And that's where I looked at the recordings and there were no transfer fees.
There weren't, okay.
For those projects, so I'm almost a hundred percent sure of.
That's good to know.
And some of it may be because of states getting easement on those properties too. No, they really don't.
I mean, I've even marked it up professionally.
You'll know where it's at. Actually, I could, I could take that back because I could show where I'm gonna put the driveway.
There you go, same.
It's driveway.
You're welcome, I helped you.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
We're here to help you.
So they're gonna apply for the driveway permit as part of the application for you guys, so, on Wednesday.
Okay.
Is this gonna be on the agenda Wednesday for planning board?
It should be.
Don't you have to notice the abutters?
I think they did, they have the whole thing. They have it all into them, just not signed by Catherine Lane, I think, is what I understand, but.
I thought there was fourteen days or something, no, seven days?
I'm thinking that they notified him, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, they're the ones that told me they're coming to the planning board, I don't think it's conceptual, but. Jacques, Jacques has been out for part of time, so I'm not sure a hundred percent. So it's the twenty-first?
Yes.
Yeah.
They were doing it over there.
You guys started seven? Oh, you are doing it over there?
Yes.
Who made him do that, the crowd?
I did. I wanted to use the space.
Perfect.
And, and we could end up with, you know, fifteen people or something there potentially.
Just so you know, the chair is here, the standing room, you have to adjourn because this will be maxed out and not by fire code. And so that's a good thing if you're booking it over there.
Oh, if it's, if it's standing room, you, you have to adjourn.
Technically, we, if the fire payment.
Because there's a capacity.
We're in violation.
Yeah, all right, good. I figured we'd try that anyway, right, Donna seemed in favor of going over there.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing is.
Right back in memory. I'll share it.
All right.
At the, at the end of last week, I met with a new application for the transfer station, and I didn't want to wait because we've had discussions about closing it on Saturday. So we had an application come in, and I actually met with a guy who was a great guy, very close to us.
This is an employment application?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And we had four applications come in, and I'd like to get approval from the board tonight to hire two new people. One of them I still have to do an interview with, but everything he's written down looks great, and he's here local. And I'd like to fill up positions. This person here, we did send for a physical on Friday, so they're set up to be. This person lives on Sugar Hill Road and where, so it's not very far from the transfer station. He's retired, and he, he's got several jobs in here where he's loading and unloading trucks, baling corrugated and recycling and various others. He's done it basically his whole life, he says he can make a forklift dance. So it was kind of a no-brainer in talking with him. He has no problem with our hours or the days we're working, he has no problem working every Saturday. I couldn't see a negative thing about him, he has good transportation, winter hours were no problem.
What's the number of hours per week for that position?
Between thirty-two and thirty-four typically.
Okay.
And on occasion, when Woody's on vacation, they might get upwards of forty, but we typically don't.
Okay, is that considered part-time?
Yes, it is, anything under thirty-four and a half.
Oh, okay.
Is part-time for us. And these guys have been working, right now with a couple of guys being out, they've been working thirty-two to thirty-four. But typically, they're about twenty-eight.
Are there different levels of positions over there?
There are, and there's different, you know, we have the six rates. The, the different levels are, we've got the attendants.
Yeah.
And then we have the assistant attendant to the manager's position. And then we have the manager's position assistant with C D L, but we don't have one of those filled yet.
Okay.
And because the C D L's been an issue, then we have Woody's position.
Okay.
So the C D L was always tough to fill, and we got a guy that might be able to do some of the things when Woody's on vacation, so we made a new, a new job because we didn't have to have C D L to be a manager, you know.
Okay.
So we can manage some of the employees while Woody's on vacation.
If you don't have C D L, are you allowed to move vehicles on the property, but just not on public roads?
We can, there's one guy that might have some trucking experience that we might train to do that.
Yeah.
And last year, we had somebody who prepped the truck for Pete to drive, somebody was prepping it last year.
It was one of the part-time employees in last long, but.
Yeah.
He was getting the truck.
So he's now gone, but we did have one part-timer that had a C D L that wasn't comfortable on the road. That was loading the truck, prepping and strapping it all down.
Sure.
So Pete had to come do a visual check to make sure everything was done right, get in the truck and just drive it.
Oh.
So it made his hours.
That's kind of what I was, what I was getting at is, if somebody actually could do that there.
We have one applicant now that used to have a class A C D L that no longer carries it for, because he has a medical card. So he might have the ability to start that again.
Okay.
So this guy is Donald Martin, so I'd like to make a recommendation that we hire Donald Martin for the part-time transfer station attendant.
That'd be step one?
That should, step one.
Okay.
I think that's eighteen ninety-four, something it's on here, but at the step one level. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion we made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And he has been for the physical and that's been returned to the jury.
Anything to sign?
No.
You, well, when we get that, the ones that don't sign.
Yeah, okay.
Because we only meet every other week, I'm gonna have just consensus from the board to hire an additional applicant. Woody has the application, so I'll, can I give you the name? Because I asked him to keep, because we're gonna still sit down with the guy. This person lives on Robert Rogers Road, again, the drive is no problem, the timing's no problem, the hours were no problem.
Yeah. Let me ask, let me ask a point-blank question then.
Yeah.
Why do these come before this meeting now, but other hires do not come before this meeting?
All hires should come before this meeting. Which ones are you?
So I've just seen, we've signed paperwork, which I thought were new hires.
No, those are, those were pay increases based upon the.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought some of them were, were brand-new hires.
Some of them were relatively new, they only went cheap.
They probably came before the board before you.
Before I was here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And now it's their first.
Because this is the first time.
It's either their first three percent raise or their first down.
No, I've seen all the raised ones, but I also saw some that at least.
EMS, maybe, we had, he came to post office and said he had several that he was interviewing and that they had to meet the criteria of licensing.
Yeah.
So the board had given a consensus to go forward with.
Oh, really, okay, so that must have been before me, then?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Just, just before you.
Okay, that's why I saw some, because I think Joe Marie was the one that said, yeah, these are, this is new, a new employee, a new hire.
Yeah.
And like, different supervisors do it differently, Woody is more hands-on and would rather have somebody else doing the interviews with him.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we'll get the ones from the police department, pretty much they handpick the guy and then all their.
Yeah, okay, no, that, that helps clarify.
And sometimes, like, we'll even provide an assist, like, to the deputy town clerk. Sometime, sometimes we'll have a selectman sit in on the interviews to give a, like a sounding board, just as an assist. Sometimes an opinion from a disinterested person is helpful, well, semi-interested person is helpful. And so I sat in on the interview there, Woody wasn't available. The next interview I did was, it was a good applicant, I just think this one is closer than the other applicant. One was from Daring, which is not out of the question to drive here, but it's probably forty minutes, thirty-five. And the other one was from Dairy. And the one from Dairy didn't call back within two and a half days, so. So Woody sent him aside in case we'd need him later, but.
Okay.
But this guy here came in, came in right away, came to the office, that's one you guys saw.
Was this right on the way home from, was concrete insane? But Daring is on top of that, Daring, the one up here, yeah, I mean, it's a middle brother.
He'd have to be doing it four days a week, they'll go over.
Absolutely, true. But there's nothing out there.
There isn't. So anyway, the next applicant, I'd like to have the ability to hire him and give you guys some.
I have a problem with that.
I have no problem with it.
We got one more guy in there.
Pending physical.
This will put us up, just to let you know, we did talk with John, which lives on Robert Rogers Road, which is another employee that went out for a knee operation.
Yeah.
And John has had a little bit of setback with some fluid around his knee and the progress in the P T, the physical steps have been taking him a little bit longer to go through. Um, steps have been taking him a little bit longer to go through. He's in PE still for it and he's gonna be going through that process, he's just starting to drive it looks like. Uh, Woody did touch base with him this week. And he said he'd like to get back to him, so I'm thinking even if he did come back, it would be for, um, one day or so a week, it won't be full schedule.
It would be nice to have on-call people too.
And we probably will keep him on-call for Saturdays if guys.
Yeah, in, in the past, there was always frowned upon that, the manager did, but we, we now embrace that because sometimes you need people just to come in for a Saturday. And, and so you can't, it's hard to say no to them because we need them like that.
So we did just have Guy Rogers come back in for this last Saturday. Although, you know, uh, Saturday is a busy day in there, at the age he's gonna drive, I think it's pretty worn in there.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, Woody keeps him hopping.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyway, uh, we do have, we had four applicants, it was good, I think we have two good applicants. We're gonna be fully staffed coming in in June, so there should be no shutdowns. And we have, the reason I wanna get them in now is so they can be fairly well-trained before Woody starts taking his vacation, because he's got four weeks off of the town. So, and, and, and the other guys will get some Saturdays for weddings or whatever else too, so. I wanna get them all up so that we're not having any holes in our schedule.
The problem in the past, I, I, we, they wanna take a Saturday off, there's no depth to take a Saturday off.
And, and we're always waiting to hire somebody, this time we put full charge in, oh, did you have time to remove all the applications for that?
Just kind of a point of order on the, uh, on the advertisements, I saw in the Bull Times, the Dunbar ad for both the, the, uh, transfer station and the town, uh, town garage. The ad was actually, it got my attention, I mean, it was s- simple, to the point, and it worked, I think it worked really well.
I was wondering, the fact that you brought it up, I'm curious as to whether they write it in the Bull Times.
So I've been asking people, um. Three of the, one, two of the people were, um, saw the sign there.
Okay.
One was on our town website, the guy down here.
Okay.
And the other one was a referral from Craig that's in there, another guy that's kind of quick-paced like you.
But I thought your ad was still good.
But it's, you know, it's good, we try every day.
Well, we probably hadn't, we probably hadn't finished with the ad either, you know, we kept taking applications.
Was it just in the?
It was in the sweet, yeah, and we just, it was like, it was a good-sized ad. And it was talking about, uh, talk Jeff's, had Jeff's number in it, could make a call and, uh, for his, his, and then transfer station, Woody's name in there.
Like Dawn was saying, that, um, the Bull Times has a cutoff date, and I was able to make that cutoff now and be printed in there for the entire month.
But kudos Lena, it was, it was a simple ad, it wasn't crazy ad, but too many details, enough to catch my attention, I said, oh, that's, that's what, that looks great. Where do I sign up?
So I did give Jeff a, another call last week too, because I actually went to a, a party with the other applicant that we talked about hiring last year. That was working for Allenstown. And an interesting thing about Allenstown is they. Their budget didn't pass, so their highway workers were gonna get two dollars more an hour to get them up to par with other towns, they didn't get that. And they were supposed to get a three percent cost of living, I think they got two percent. So the applicant I gave him was interested because our position's starting. If he starts at between level two or three, somewhere's in there, because he's already driving for a minute time. Would be starting at, you know, a couple of dollars an hour more than what he's making, so I think he'd be worthwhile, and he lives in town. So for Paul, so I gave Jeff that information this week, so he has it. Okay, so that's everything for the transfer station. While I was down there, I reminded Woody the face of that is starting to get pretty well peeled. And while I was down visiting Jeff at the highway department, I noticed his building, the fascia and a bunch of his sides need painting like we did, so. Um, I don't know if we wanna start contacting a couple painters to start, we're in the season to start looking at that now.
When are we looking to get them, the highway and the transfer?
I'd like to look at them, even if we don't do all sides this year, we'll get a price on the whole thing. And then, uh, maybe a price broken down half this year and half next year. Two sides and two sides or so.
That's a win-win, I think it's time.
Okay.
And there were, there were a couple, um, quotes we got, we did this building that, uh, we didn't use the people because we wanted the highest-end building here, but like. Surper painters and, um, I think that college one that you see around, college, uh, whatever painters.
College pro. College pro.
College pro, they had, they had good numbers here, and I know on that building, we didn't wanna take a chance.
Although my, I've had some personal experience with Surper Painters, the local franchise, I'm very pleased with them.
And their numbers were good, so maybe we wanna reach out to those type of people this time and.
Yeah.
Um. We have an amended. Um, waiver extension here with a corrected date on it. And this is coming from the tax collector. Uh, the date was wrong on the last one, so we're setting that up for her. That's the last thing on the general agenda. That's for Lena's pile afterwards. What's this stuff for Sanford here, Lena?
That's the homework you're gonna take home.
Oh, okay. Alright. We have some inspection results from Pro Technology for our. Mailbox items here. Were there any negatives or just small amounts due for each?
Um, there's a couple of things.
Replaced batteries, passed through lifespan.
There's two of the buildings that need, uh, a, a new battery.
Yeah.
And then the town hall library basement. Smoke detector number fourteen failed to. Turn on, and when I looked at last year's, um. Inspections, that was on that list of the estimate that we paid and had repaired. So I've got an email to the president, it installer who inspected it this year, to have him look at it again, because if they, it was on that list to replace. Then it shouldn't be working this year, I would think.
One year, absolutely.
So either they didn't replace when they did their service or something, but.
Yeah.
So that's a good call, uh, but it's, it is a no-brainer, it's two hundred and forty-six dollars. I say we give Lena the, uh, ability to.
Yeah, with, with, with the discretion to, uh, argue with, to challenge the company on the, on the repair.
Right, I'm gonna follow up with that again, but.
Oh, that was just one of them, yes.
That's just one. Um, the library's a little bit more expensive, because it's got, you just gotta do the inspection with the Department of Labor for the elevator inspection. And that's in a separate report, and there were some deficiencies in that, which will be addressed separately.
Okay. Pretty much the only.
But these are gonna, going to be reoccurring annual inspections. It's required by Department of Labor and these.
Yeah, we never used to do them annually, right?
No, we didn't, but we need to now.
We're on their schedule, they'll impress, they'll, visit us and do them.
Yeah.
So this one's more because the, um, the actual alarms within the, within the elevator, not the elevator inspection itself?
Correct, that's a separate.
That's a separate.
Yeah, but they have to be, they have to participate because they can turn the panel off, they have to be able to turn and reset the alarms and all the different areas, that's why. Signing alarms.
There's quantity of two on that one Dana.
True.
Is this one the same, there's another one?
Highway maybe, and the transfer. The transfer and highway both have a battery that we'll need to replace.
Concord stage room.
That's transfer.
Well, I'd think cheaper when we were just looking at the first one.
Yeah.
You have an elevator inspection on here as well?
Yeah. There, as I said, there were some deficiencies on there, he's gonna give us a formal cover letter, and some of the items will have to be addressed before, um. Because they're wired.
Please tell me speed isn't one of them.
Nope.
Okay. So we also have here. An email, I had, uh, legal inquiry done on the deputy town clerk hours. Um, and the reason I wanted to know on the deputy, because the deputy is not an elected official. So I wanna know if on the deputy, if we controlled her hours, being the select board. And, uh, it looks like we would have the ability to. Now, I know she is not fully trained at this point. But it does look like we have some. Ability to, um.
Offer evening hours.
Yes. And, uh, I don't think at this point it's something, because the training's still in process, we need to look at, but I do wanna know that. You know, we have some options. Um, because it's getting to be quite a concern with people calling in. And, uh, you know, Wednesdays is closed, Fridays is closed, no evening hours. Uh, the girls at the office, I, I was in signing one on Wednesday, they had three people on Wednesday that came in. Earlier that morning for different things, whether it's marriage certificate or dogs and. There's a lot of things that if you get a new vehicle or you want to do the, um, vanity plates, or if you have a dog, or if the dog has just been spaded. All those things you have to come in for, you cannot do, um, online or over the phone, so. It's been an issue, and to that event, we had a, a letter, a formal letter, come in as a complaint, um, to that. They've been in several times and not found it open, and, uh.
That's the one that just came in, right? Yesterday.
Yeah, it was coincidence that it came in and it was addressed to the select one.
And, um, one thing I did ask the girls to do at the office, um, mostly Hope, because she gets them, but also Joe Marie. Is to do a little log of how many they're seeing, kind of what the reason was, whether it's a marriage license or a dog license or what, and just. So we can kind of see how many people are, you know, coming in on off days that are.
Can, can I speak on that? I think the office staff in my office are in disagreement with doing that. Because this was something that was done, is done through the police department to log, whether it's a hang-up call, a telephone call, and all the other things involved.
Nothing to do with that.
And then in, because they were both deputies in the past, they were asked by the previous tax, uh, town clerk. To log all their emails, their telephone calls and whatnot, and it becomes very time-consuming to, to monitor that kind of thing, um.
I just wanted a quick notepad.
You're just ha, you're just asking for how many people might show up, say?
Yeah, and maybe for a lot of things.
And then realize that it's closed.
Yeah.
So just log a number one slash, when you get the five, cross it.
Yeah.
On the date, okay.
Just so we know, and if, and if they wanna jot down whether it's a, you know, for a dog license or whatever they.
Just to give kind of a traffic count is really all.
And one of the, the reason that they weren't coming in too, dog license, car registration, uh, marriage certificate.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of.
That, that would help tailor the, uh, if we're gonna force evening hours, that would, that would, you would know this is why they're coming in.
And, and, and.
I, I don't, I don't think it has to tie to a name, just, just give a, a general, a general running list. It can be three or four words.
Okay.
And they're getting, and they're getting quite a few, quite a bit of traffic doing this, it's not. It's not small. Okay. Email follow-up regarding live care on the chem- chemical use. Um, he keep, they asked to keep the signs up for forty-eight hours on here, and it's, uh. It basically says there's no chemicals or herbicides in there that are gonna hurt people or the lawn, uh, or, or animals, pets. And so that was just a follow-up because we had one lady complain on.
Absolutely, great, spot on, correct, that's great.
You forward it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We had an email from Brad Roseberry requesting signatures to oppose heavier trucks. Um, I hadn't seen this yet, it must've just come in today.
Uh, yesterday, but all three of you, it was actually addressed to you, so.
Dear Chairman Holt, I'm reaching out to local town officials in the Dunbar area for the coal issuance, bigger trucks. A national nonprofit that seeks to stop legislation allowing heavier and longer semis trucks from passing in Congress. I'm reaching out to you, well-proposed Congress, to dramatically increase the weight of semi-trucks on the road for us to help. Okay, it's clicked to add your name, I don't think this is something we wanna get involved in. Looks like it's on the state highways and everything. Telling you how many seventy-eight point seven billion trucks go and replacements of roads, but.
I mean, is that, uh, is that, um, talking about the fact that?
I thought it was something in town that has nothing to do with in town.
Oh, so it's not, it's not?
It's a national issue.
It's a national issue with.
Right, but they wouldn't, nationally, they wouldn't be, um, saying that you have to take heavier trucks on your state highways?
I think they're trying to.
The weights they're looking at, I don't think are even for thirteen trucks. For longer semis on the state highways and.
Like the interstates?
Yeah. You know, if you want west, those big, huge, um, tan tractors and tandem.
Yeah.
They pull, it's a lot, a lot more out there, I don't, I don't even foresee the problem here, but to be honest with you.
I think it's Dana, we, we, uh, just for a point of order, we get a lot of, uh, solicitations for, uh, public support from elected officials for esoteric items that don't have any, uh, bearing upon.
Yeah.
How we manage town. I mean, I think if any one of, uh, any one of us wanted to support individually is one thing, but as a town, I don't think it's appropriate for us to get involved at this level.
Yeah, un- unless we were told we had to take huge trucks.
To, to Dunbar.
Through Dunbar.
Exactly.
And we couldn't stop it.
Correct. We can't even stop them slowing down and going thirty through town here.
Okay, no, I. I'll, I'll refer to your.
Okay.
Judgment.
So just so we're clear, Lena, I will work out the purchase and sales on that property for the KIAN property. We'll lose the proper deposit, make sure the amounts match, the description on the lot matches. Uh, which Jacques has already filled out, and, uh, I'll get her to sign that as well. And, uh, I'll tell them the check will be forthcoming after they do a regular process next week with the checks. And, um. I think that's all I have for the meeting, I'd like to bring it back for any public comment, nothing? Will you have anything for the board?
I just wanna remind the board that the audit is scheduled for next week, Monday through Friday. And the auditor, two of them will be in tomorrow morning just for, uh, questions, um, of.
And what is the audit?
Next week.
Uh, no, what is the scope of the audit?
It's the annual audit on the budget.
Okay. If it is a financial audit.
Yeah, and, yeah, and to make sure that we are compliant with the GANSP.
And in the past, it's just, I, I think it's courtesy to Lena that we don't come in there bugger with, uh, so, uh, small items, unless it's life and death, or. The big items, we don't bugger during this week, because it could be hair pulling.
Okay.
Yeah.
It keeps you busy?
Um, it's gotten a lot easier because we really have good system, and all the, um. Advisements in our, um, management letter have been pretty much either repeat because the town staffing is so small. Or we've gotten a handle on what is required to have a good, secure audit.
And I, I wanna give kudos to Hope, for, because she knows audits we've been signing. We've never been so, uh, up to date a- as we've had up to this point, so Hope gets some kudos.
She does, she does a very good job of making sure everybody's, uh, checking, double-checking, and we have everything in place when we approve something.
But sometimes it can be, when the auditor's standing there, Lena does not need to be buggered.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I had, uh, two things, uh, one was the, were we gonna do a preview of the, that lot situation you were talking about earlier?
This is the packet we have.
That's the packet that you have there.
Okay.
There's more information fourth.
Is this all one?
That's all the information, and then I also, based on an email that I got late this week, um, Donna. Originally said to, this is what I sent to Sean about the old Mel Burke Road, would you have that emailed? That she also sent me today at one twenty-two. Sean also mentioned a petition layout for the road, and if the road is shown on a plan, it is seen as a d- dedication. And he cited six seventy-four forty-one, which I've printed to add to your packet. But, uh, the reason why I'm giving you all this information, because there's a lot of history on it. Um, the gentleman has requested to be on the agenda for next Thursday, uh, the next meeting, the twenty-ninth. And, um, he is going before the planning board, but, um, the, the concern that Donna had is she didn't think that the gentleman had. Um, classified, she knows that the lot does not have classified frontage. Her concerns is that, is that, is it a private way where it was discontinued? So therefore, what's the avenue that she would have to take? And our lawyer advised that that person come before the select board to discuss what he's, his project is.
It rose to discontinue then?
Yeah. I don't believe so, there's a lot of information that you may have to interpret it.
I, I looked at it with Lena for about an hour today, Dana saw me over, saw me looking at it, I would say it's, it's gray. There's no black and white here, there's a lot of gray, there's a lot of missing pieces.
Yeah. But I did find, uh, a document, um, log sheet, which is now in your packet, um, volume and. Um, volume and, and page recorded with the town clerk that that road from Powell Lane. To Long Pond Road.
Right.
Was laid out. So the comment that attorney in.
So what's more important now that we know it was laid out?
Yep.
You have the layout of the road, which is great.
Yep.
Now, the only other thing that discon- discontinuation can only happen at town meetings, like when they have no authority. So, and every time I chase one of those roads, you always look for a town meeting where it was discontinued.
Yeah.
But it was discontinued, but this is but well before, this is like eighteen seventy-six.
Yep.
It was discontinued.
Well, doesn't matter when, as long as it was discontinued.
But then thirty years later, it was.
Portions of the road, portions of the road opened up again.
Selectmen were told they had to open it up. So it's very confusing.
And, and have we been maintaining it?
Nope, not, uh, only up to um.
The houses, which is, the houses which are on there now.
So the portions that they opened up, did we maintain those sections?
No, there is a section that's definitely, it's shown on our map as class six. The question is, is it class six or is it discontinued? So we have to, I'm got, I've got a single page asking the town clerk to look up that volume in her records, because that will be helpful. Um, and there are comments from the, even this one here. I should give this to you.
Cause if it's been.
She said Sean also mentions a petition to lay out a road, and if a road is shown on a plan, it is seen as a dedication. So that means, this I would say that I just gave to you, it's important that you read it.
Lean, I, I reflected upon this after I left, and uh, there's a lot to read here. But at the end of the day, regardless, let's say there's a subdivision, some, a property owner wants to do something with subdivision. Subdivisions will require access, which requires a road, whether it be a car path or a classics road, the road will have to be brought to standards. And the only tool, when we, we, the select board governs roads, the su- the planning board does not, because it's out of whose subdivision. It can be existed. What we do is basically, say the road can be approved, and we can, the only thing we have can, we can request. Is a bond be put on it so that meets the requirements of the current road structure that we, the standards we establish. And we have a document for that, which they have to bring it up to. It, it's, it's gonna, it's, it, there's a lot of gray material in, in here, but at the end of the day, I think we should be helping our residents. Uh, help with the subdivisions, but I don't see anything that would preclude us from doing that. That was my first blush, not to sway you, but I think it's worth a lot to do our homework. And read that and see how many gray areas there are in there.
So can I just also for Dana's benefit, um, we have a lot of lots of records throughout the town that are either. Lots of record before zoning, which uh, started in nineteen seventy. They are uh, substandard lots, they're not, they, they don't conform to the zone that they're in right now. And or they're on classics or private roads. Those are the lots typically that come before the selectmen. And they ask permission, can I get a building permit? It's a lot of record, this is how far I am from a class five. And there's stipulations and guides for that. In this particular, it's a, it's a case, it, there's a lot of record of. Sixty acres, I forget how many in that lot, and he wants to create a five acre lot and subdivide it, but it doesn't have class five frontage. So, one way or another, whether it's private or class six, if they're going to subdivide, they're gonna have to upgrade a section. From the class five point to the three hundred foot feet of frontage that will be required for the new lot.
New lot, obviously new subdivision, yes.
And if you're gonna build on a, on, on a land without frontage, you have to go to zone it.
But there, there is no lot there. It doesn't, they're creating a lot without frontage on a class.
And so, the delineation, we control the roads, planning board doesn't control the roads in this particular case.
Yeah.
Because a road is in question, because it's a gray area, and even Sean says, he's ki- he's kinda grandfiling the road in there. And I don't care if it's car path or a road, but.
What the guy should be doing is building on the sixty acres and love a subdivision, the subdivision is where it's gonna mess him up.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And that's where it's out of the control of the select board, but.
Because the subdivision is gonna be where he's required to do the road, but if he's.
By the planning board standards.
Just on the one lot.
Yeah.
You're, you're a spot on, correct.
What he should do is build on a lot and then do a lot line adjustment after the fact.
No, no, there's a lot already there, his, the dad is living there. He wants to subdivide, buy it off five acres for the son.
That's beyond his place.
It's before his place.
North or south, depends which way you go.
It's south of.
Yeah.
Al Byron is on the lot in the middle.
This, this road is down here off of thirteen, and it comes down onto Long Pond Road. You can drive your vehicle through there, I wouldn't drive yours, but. Um, you can drive a vehicle through that road if you were hunting.
It's class six, non-mating.
If, if it hasn't been discontinued, that's the question. It could've been discontinued too. And at one point, the selectmen, uh, this is over a hundred twenty years, a hundred. How many, a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy years ago, they discontinued it. Portions of.
Over a hundred, yeah.
And the thing is, our records are sketchy, it's.
It's gonna either go back through the legislative body or not to get. When it's discontinued, the land goes back to the butters, although each butter does have rights to go down that road to access their land.
But there's conflicting information to my attorney there, so.
So that's how, that's how gray it is, and the thing is.
Um, did Dana get a copy of the hard roads to travel?
Did I give you a copy? I think I did, I passed it on from Justin.
Oh, yeah.
And each of my hard roads to travel.
Okay.
A lot of.
All your RSAs that they're gonna cite in all of these will be in that book typically, cause it's hard growth droughts.
It's about probably ninety-five percent completely accurate, there's like five percent no changes.
So they have a lot of the old RSAs in there that are gonna reference it, and they'll also give you kind of a legal description to the RSA below it. And also some case studies, so it's a pretty interesting book to read.
It kinda translates the legis- the, the legalese into common sense, and it's a nice book to read.
Okay.
And you can also Google the RSAs too.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that just uh, why, you may, Dana, why, why is it coming to this board? Planning board washes their hands, they know that roads uh, uh, come in the purview of the selectmen. And so it's such a gray area, really, they don't wanna touch it really, because it is a gray area and it does fall under our jurisdiction.
If it was a lot of record, this person is looking to create a new lot.
And, and the question, i- is it still a road, is it discontinued and the, and, well, our town lawyer says one thing, and the thing is some of the legal documents. Suggests another thing.
So we'll read through it then.
Yeah, I, I think it should be interesting, but uh, I have to say. It burdens the office when we have to go, every, every, every application like this where it's, we don't have good records, it hurts us.
But we're not, we're not alone in that, every town.
Oh, absolutely.
Has a sand.
It's a challenge.
And there's no, no good land left on the main roads typically, so we're gonna have more of these as it comes down. We've taken a pretty high line that we have upgraded the road to kind of a class five standard or. Almost a class five, sometimes a wither one there, or if they're scenic roads.
And most recently, I think what we've done is we have driveway, you have to have a driveway, um, a good driveway. Have you seen some of the driveways on thirteen that go straight up almost? Though, those would not be acceptable on our building permit, a building, building codes.
None of ours, well, if even Dana's new, Dana's a new selectman, when we passed that driveway where it's, I thought it was way too. Um, restrictive. And then we found out it wasn't the select boards, it was the planning boards, and when it went to them, they became even more restrictive. Your driveway wouldn't make it, your radiuses on your curves.
I, I thought the road agent was the ultimate authority on that.
Well, it's, the planning board is one that develops, the road agent is the one, the road agent only cares about where they come off the road, then the fire department cares from there on. So it's kind of a combination now. But like the radiuses, you can't have under a twenty-five foot inside radius, and you can't have over a fifty foot outside radius. So if you look at the radiuses, it's just that you go up. You know?
As the former's ride chief said, we used to live in the wild, wild west here, because we had no regulations, we were in a few towns, so finally it'll make one. And it's the same to the fire equipment.
The pitch off the road ten percent and whatnot, I don't even know what we ended up, but.
You have a copy of it in there.
It was challenging times back.
We had three select on the board, none of our driveways in our own homes met that.
Really?
And they passed it, so. I know it's for the new stuff, but.
Wasn't worth it, I could put it that way.
So anyway, uh, did you have anything else for the board, Dana?
Yeah, um, did we get an answer on that account payable, um, question?
Oh, actually we did. Um, he said this for a two week period, so back in two thousand and three or four.
Is uh, you, you wanna inform Dave what this was? I think, I think you knew about it.
Dana went to sign the manifest, and he's reviewing all the invoices there, and then he's looking at the invoices. And when he came across one from Crosby Construction, it had a specific hours of forty-eight and.
Twenty-four, yeah.
For hauling and.
Hauling and loading.
Yeah, and so he questioned the number of hours, because it wasn't, didn't elaborate any range.
For what period of time was that for?
So.
They listed.
So what he has started to do back in about two thousand and four, at the request of the uh, um, payroll and. Payable department, is that he submits a time sheet every other week for just the road agent job and the hours that he works on that. And then every other week for the work or jobs or projects that he works on, that he needs to complete in a certain period of time. So the forty-eight hours, is that what we calculated?
Forty, it's forty-eight and twenty-four.
Okay, so for those eighty hours, if you round it, um, was for a period of two weeks. And it's, it actually took him into this past Monday, he didn't wanna build a town for one more extra day, but that was, um, every year they, um.
So for two weeks, he didn't have any road agent?
No, he, he will do road agent functions after hours. He said there's very seldom that they overlap. But you know, he may get a request on a building department, he's gotta go check someone's driveway, but he'll do it at the end of the day. Um, but he only builds the town on it every other week to keep the two jobs separate. This is a vendor service that he's providing, this is the road agent position that he's filling. It seems to go better for um, accounting and billing.
Okay. And, and that work that was done, is that a typical two week period? Cause I don't think I've seen that.
Yeah, he doesn't do that often, but this was to in, get the sand and sand mix that he had to purchase from three different sources. To mix up so that it's ready to mix with the salt that's at the um, highway.
So, yeah, so I guess how, I, how often is that amount of work that?
Let me, let me start. What it was is, he was piling up the sand that he uses for his winter use.
Yeah.
And we get that from the pits, and the Tom Forrest owns the pit that he gets it out of.
Okay.
And he's getting it out of the one over here off of um, Stark, by Stark Pond. And so, when he, he buys the sand from there, but he puts a screener and screens it, and they have a big pile there. They screens probably once every three years. And then they transfer it from here over to the building here, and he stacks it up with his equipment over here. So he's got a loader down there working.
Yeah.
And his excavator up here working, and his backhoe track loader I seen him using.
Yeah.
And we used to use a bunch of the guys that plowed snow, like Billy Nichols would haul, Jeff would haul. And some of the other side of that I think used to haul, and they'd get it all done a little quicker. And so now, the town truck hauls. And his own ten wheeler hauls.
That's correct.
And they load each other, they self-load each other when they're down here, and then Jeff piles it up over here. So it was just the sand that spread, and they'll mix it later.
Okay. And I can attest to the uh, the, the, the truck traffic, it's been busy. Okay, is that like an end of season thing?
Uh, they'll do it after the season, and you know, like in the springtime. Um, there's not a lot to do because they can't be doing the paving yet and this and that.
Yeah, so it's a little long period, right?
It's a wet period, so they're not doing culverts, so that's when they generally do it every year.
Okay, okay. And during, during the winter is, he must be, he must have to refill this over here, no?
That's enough for the whole.
He saves all that for the winter.
Okay, so that's actually part of mine.
And that pile is large enough, Dana, that um, he digs into the core of it and it keeps it unfrosted.
Yeah.
And the outside will have a core of frost. And then in the spring now, of course, all falls down in, so he has a little leftover every year.
Okay.
But he kinda keeps, you can't have too small a pile, cause too much will freeze. Is what he told me the other day, when I was there watching him pile it up.
It's huge.
Yeah.
So, he scoops that out, and then the other bays are one salt only, and the other ones are salt sand, and he mixes those two together.
Okay.
And the piles.
Yeah.
And as a resident, you can go down and get a five gallon bucket if you need one.
Yeah, no, is there a, a separate pile, or do you go right to the?
Right to the same pile.
Right to the main one, if you, if you needed, if a resident wanted it?
Sure.
Okay.
He has to have sand only for all the class five dirt roads, can't put salt on those roads, so.
Cause they melt too.
And those are the one, that's the pile with the straight sand that's available to the residents, they can bring in their five gallons.
Then he'll mix the, the straight salt with the sand salt mix sometimes.
Okay.
So the one all the way to the right is all salt, you'll see there's still some in there.
Yeah.
And that will get loaded at a different time of the year, that'll all come from a salt purchase that we sign once a year on that too.
Oh, okay.
Well, that comes like weekly during the winter time, or every other week.
Oh, it comes out much in the winter. I know we buy it all at one time on a purchase.
It's a state, a state contract.
Oh, yeah, the price per ton is a state contract, but the invoices will be coming in, we get a lot of snow.
And was there a time where um, the town was sand only and no salt?
Oh, yeah, three years.
Yeah, when did that change?
I would say probably twenty years ago, they started doing some.
Oh, really? Cause I thought when I first got here, fourteen years ago, it was sand only.
It could've been a dirt road.
Yeah, it could've been, and I, we heard a lot of complaints that.
Tw- twist hill.
Twist hill.
Their, their vehicles were being bombarded with rocks and salt.
Fifteen years ago, although, no, I've been in my house fifteen years, it was early in the night.
Yeah, was it? Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I seem to remember um, that I actually liked the roads in Dunbarton, cause you just have the sand on them, and you could drive over.
Yeah, it wasn't slippery at all.
And you'd get into Gosstown and it's all slush and crap.
Slippery as.
Yeah, and it was, it was actually harder to drive on.
The only thing with ours is um, it would keep building up, where theirs would empty off after a day or something.
Yeah, right.
And ours would keep building up, then you always had hard patches and soft, so that's why they went with more of the salt.
Okay.
But there were some areas that we did just do sand only, cause there was wells close to the road.
Environmental reasons, runoff or something.
Well, I was a good, my driveway used to shovel it by hand.
E- even on the state, I mean, some of the houses which are close to the road, the state had a setup, because it contaminated the weather with salt.
Oh.
Yeah, the state put new wells in for people.
Oh, wow, okay. When they were salting their.
Their thirteen.
The state highways. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Right, I'm good. Dana's worn me out, I got nothing else.
Thank you. All good.
They're good question, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And you're gonna need them when I'm not here next year, so.
We should do a joint.
Yeah, we should do a joint at.
Four, eight fourteen?
Eight fourteen. My phone.